One, two, three, four, five. Call to order. We got our five. Okay, roll call, vote of trustees. You want me to talk and you write, you can call it.
I can call this.
Okay, you call them.
Uh, Janet Cress.
Here.
Howard Hager.
Here.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
And myself, here. Chad Sargent, here.
All right, feels like I'm in school.
We have four.
Okay, recognition of guests, we have guests today, thank you for joining us. Okay, item number four, discussion, consideration, and possible action to adopt- to adoption of ordinance number six, an ordinance of the mayor and the board of trustees of the town of Coch, town Oklahoma, amending Title IV business license regulations by adding chapter six, short-term rental providing for definitions, providing for the requirement of the license, providing for an application process, providing for short-term rental registration and annual license fees, providing for a self-certification process, providing for operator responsibilities, providing for revocation, providing for waiver of initial registration fee, providing for a penalty, providing a severability clause, and providing for publication and effective date. Do we have a discussion on ordinance number six?
Yes. Do we want to amend any of the fees and penalties?
We're discussing section four dash six dash four, fees. I think that I'm in favor of amending some fees.
I'm assuming everybody kinda got the same feedback that I got once after our last meeting Wednesday about fees. I would just, I guess, just to get the ball relevant on it, I would recommend we reduce the annual fee, reduce it down, and maybe increase the penalty for non-compliance.
That is exactly the same feedback I have. So, we're talking about section four, that, you know, let's go in order. Does anybody have a problem with it being three hundred dollars just to register, but we're gonna waive it for the first year? Do you have a problem with that?
Yeah, isn't that what we're trying to reduce to a hundred?
No, that's the annual renewal application. Cause they're gonna, we're gonna waive the three hundred dollars if they just turn it in.
We waived it if they registered by July one.
Right, and they're current on their taxes.
Now, but that three hundred would apply to any new ones coming in after the July one.
Yes.
But that three hundred, okay, here's maybe a way I would think is, okay, let's figure out what we're going to maybe reduce that yearly fee to. It does need a fee, I think it needs some type of fee with it. I would recommend a hundred dollars, but that's strictly just a recommendation based on these conversations and- and what it's gonna take to hire an inspector or someone to come in and actually go to these facilities, make sure they're meeting code, make sure they're, or if someone's non-compliant can actually go there and do the work.
I'm good with a hundred dollars, and here's, here's my thought. If they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, nobody's gonna come calling on them. But when we've got six phone calls on the same cabin, month after month, year after year, there needs to be some compliance. And for someone not paying their property, their lodging tax, there needs to be compliance. So, why punish the people who are doing what they're supposed to do? Make the annual renewal fee a hundred bu- a hundred bucks, but change the late fees and penalties to something higher, to punish the people who are not doing their work.
Uh, I agree. What do you mean doing their work?
They're not putting in their taxes, or we've had the same, so I talked to the sheriff's office, they took twelve hundred phone calls in Coch, town last year. They didn't count the ones that I took, or anybody else, or Jason, they didn't count Jason's. Twelve hundred phone calls, mostly they're playing their music too loud, they're parking in the street, nobody can get by, there's a domestic assault, what, I mean, whatever they were. But the, the, the police for Coch, town doesn't come cheap. And this certainly doesn't cover it, but it's a start that we can at least enact, who owns these cabins and where are they? And are they licensed? We just wanna be able to be able to find these people. So, I would recommend the late fee be increased to, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars a month, or two twenty-five, and change their renewal to a hundred.
And then, I would say if we're gonna keep that three hundred dollar initial signup fee, that includes the hundred dollars for that year, correct?
Yes, it does.
So, so, so a new cabin comes in after July one, they've got a one-time fee of three hundred bucks to start, and then they're a hundred dollars a year like all the other cabins.
Because for July, July first is your day.
Mayor, uh, the, the way that the ordinance is written, it states that the annual fee is accompanied by the registration fee, so it does not, if you set the first fee up, uh, it's, that would just be a three hundred registration fee, then they would still have to be accompanied by the second payment, is that, yes, sir?
Well, that's-
But if it's only a hundred dollars, then I'm okay with that.
I would, I would make the suggestion that we take the annual, or the, the initial registration fee from three hundred down to two hundred or one fifty, and then they still gonna pay the one hundred annual renewal.
But for new cabins coming on after July first, I think three hundred is kind of a fair number to set everything up for the taxes and monitoring. I'd rather have the annual renewal lower, because they're participating and doing a good job.
Cause still gonna do that, they're still gonna be paying three hundred at the initial, so-
Yeah.
If we did get three hundred, make the monthly, or the, or the year the renewal of fifty, do three hundred for an initial, initial pay by whatever, you set up, pay three hundred bucks and then fifty dollars a year after that. I don't know, I'm gonna say so, I don't know where we got these numbers, if we, if these numbers were, just to speak, if these numbers were, were a consensus of an average, because the averages that I'm finding that I've done for the past two to three days are, you know, are far from what we have. And a lot of these, um, places, renewal fees for a year are fifty to a hundred dollars per year. I don't think whatever we do today is gonna affect the outcome of the next two to three months of getting people on board. That's just my opinion, I don't think it's gonna affect, I don't think that's the reason why people are hesitating. I think change is the reason people are hesitant. And so, I think whatever we decide today, just keep in mind, any other tourist town out there, I've called Moab, I've called Branson, I've talked to Gatlinburg, I've talked to Hot Springs, and you can go right to their websites and see their fees. All their fees are two twenty-five for a, actually two hundred for a two-bedroom, and it just goes up a hundred a bedroom. And so, some fifty a bedroom. So, they have a tier system set up. Um, so, what, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't think our fees are the rea- I don't think it's gonna make a difference in people signing up. And I'm willing to hold my position and thus come back two months later and see where we're at. I think it's just a change, getting people on board where they understand what's going on a hundred percent, cause I think a lot of people are a little confused, and maybe they're all hesitating just because it's changed. So, today, whatever we decide, um, I just want people to know the average, averages out there, we're not too far off from averages. But we do have a lot of concerned people that have issues with, you know, larger cabins being charged the same as a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. But if you look across the consensus of all these tourist places that I mentioned, they all have that tiered out. So, maybe as we progressively move forward, we can get to that point, cause we have people here that have tents. We have some that have one bedrooms, like Janet's talked about, and two bedrooms, and smaller economy cabins. And you have some that are six and seven bedrooms. And so, I think as we move forward, we wanna keep that in mind, but as far as today, you know, I'm good with what we feel like is fair, but I do know that, um, we'll get to four, six, six, I wanna talk about four, six, six later, but, um, I got some questions on that one. I just don't want to, uh, you know, I don't want anybody to feel like, well, this is gonna be some sort of incentive package where people are gonna all of a sudden start signing up. I don't think so. That's what the penalty comes in, that's why we have, we have the beacon.
Right, this, so these fees came from, I'm gonna get at them next, um, these fees came from, you know, again, Moab, Gatlinburg, Hot Springs, they've been doing this for a long time.
Long time.
This is what it is actually costing us to put the system in. And so, what we did was kinda divide what that was, so this is just that zero net for us. Otherwise, we'd have to dip in what little funds we are getting in taxes to get this implemented. So, that's where these fees came from. Back a little bit to Chad's point, not everybody is a tourist friendly town, so they have these high fees. We want to be a tourist friendly town, we want to make this affordable for people, but we also, and again, the ones who've already been here, yeah, it's tough to have to pay a bunch of fees that you weren't expecting, and that's why we're waiving this first year, for those that are already here. If you come in here going forward, you know it's gonna cost you three hundred dollars for a fee, just like it will in all the other towns in America. So, I think that's fair where we are. The other side of this is, once they get registered, you know, life is never gonna be fair. So, an eight-bedroom cabin has to pay the same fee as a one-bedroom cabin, but once they start paying their taxes, the eight-bedroom cabin, they're gonna be bringing in more taxes. So, to me, there's more fairness for them in that way than that, you know, they're bringing in more taxes for the investment that they made of their three hundred dollars. Um, this is for the use of all the cabins, whether it's a one-bedroom on that road or whatever, so, that's my deal. I do think that waiving that three hundred dollars, especially if there are multiple cabin owners, I think it will incentivize them to make sure they're registered and paid up by July first.
And that, that was my concern, is that we're waiving this, that's what we and Adam were talking about yesterday, we're waiving this till midsummer. You would assume that you would have a massive influx of people saying, oh, crazy, go ahead and-
We're already seeing it, we're already seeing it, just from the discussions, yes, yes, we're, like I said, it is an incentive, it is an incentive.
Okay, that's what I was-
So, just a couple of numbers for you guys to consider, I was on a call yesterday with Avenue, just an introductory call to their staff and the folks who've been handling our project. Uh, based upon some data that they've collected to this point, a very average, um, uh, producer, a very average, um, lodging unit, uh, in our community, produces between two hundred and three hundred dollars per month in lodging tax revenues. That's what should be filed to the town, so, if you wanna consider that two, three hundred dollar margin for a, a late fee, because that's basically what an average producer, no, I've seen some astronomical numbers, um, in our community, much larger producers and much smaller producers. So, a median would be between that two hundred and three hundred dollar range, based upon what they've collected on, up to this point, for very moderate, um, renter, rental unit.
That was taxes.
Yeah, for lodging taxes that they would file, that they would estimate.
Okay, well, that was a good conversation, and I, I agree with, with what you're doing here. So, your three hundred registration, your hundred-dollar annual renewal, and your late penalty of two fifty. I agree with that, it makes sense. It makes sense what you said Diane about the six-bedroom, seven-bedroom, eight-bedroom, the amount of taxes they pay is not gonna make me so mad that my little hundred and fifty-dollar cabin has to pay a hundred dollars, and your eight-bedroom has to pay hundreds, so, it makes more sense.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on four dash six dash four, are we ready to move on to?
Well, before, before we start redlining and taking numbers out and putting different numbers in, let's, let's go-
Just, I said, let's go to the whole thing.
Let's go the whole thing, and then we'll get all, all the conversations out, and then let's go back to that and address it again once they get all the information shared.
Let me talk about, uh, four dash six dash five for a minute, when we talk about inspection and self-certification. That goes back to, it's a legal document, when you sign it up, you know, we're not gonna come and look in your cabins, that's not what we're doing. You just sign, it says, yes, I had, I said, I have this many bedrooms, and it sleeps this many, and I've met all the codes and ordinances that I'm supposed to, local, state, and federal. That's your self-certification at this point.
Well, I mean, I don't have any idea if my cabins meet building codes, fire codes, and all applicable laws, and I've got a clue.
You could consider changing the verbiage on that one to, I understand that I'm required to keep my facilities to this fire standard, to this building code standard, so that way, you're not putting that into whatever the international building code is in the community.
So, the third line on section four dash six dash five.
I, IBC.
It's a building code standard, it's very clear.
So, so, as a owner, I now have to go kinda try to read that standard, get me a lawyer, go check on building codes?
It's the operator.
Yeah.
And I would say no to that, like, is you like, I don't think each individual is gonna have to go out to their cabin and go through it and make sure that they meet this IBC. But they need to sign something that says, to the best of my knowledge, as far as I know, where to go. Then, if there's never an issue with that cabin, and say, we do have an inspector at some point that is going out, I think our initial reaction is, that inspector will call you, be like, hey, you gotta do these changes, and then you're given a certain amount of time to make those changes. But until then, until we actually have someone that can come out and do the inspections.
I think we need to, if we're gonna change that kind of language, I think we need to call Liz, because it says verification of compliance, if we wanna work meant that to something else, I think we need to grab Liz on the phone, she said she would be available, to change it to, and let's talk about our word before we call her.
And, um, and the wording of the application too, because, uh, it's kinda hard to put a signature on something when I don't know if I meet building codes or fire codes. And then, which puts me in a situation of a possible lawsuit, when IBC comes out and says you're non-compliant, and I'm like, I don't know.
Cause we haven't had, we haven't had compliance, and so. The town will be the ones to enforce non-compliance, so it would be up to the town at that point to be like, okay, the inspector came out, you're non-compliant, you've got thirty days to get compliant, or we're gonna revoke your, your, uh, STR. Or, you know, that-
And also the town is on, you know, I mean, I've been having those inspections, I mean, not now, cause I don't have to do it. But when we did cabins, it was like, you can't put water in the ice cube trays, cause it might not be sanitary. Fine, now you get an empty ice cream, you're gonna feel your own. I mean, but it's not a life and death situation, if it's, you know, a fire hazard, then, then the inspector could shut you down, depending on the, uh, degree of health and safety violation that it is. Like a restaurant, hey Chad, you need to do this, this, and this, but we're not gonna shut you down today. You got gray chicken in there, you probably gonna have to lock the door that day.
So, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but all cabins are, um, based off of a residential-
Yes.
Standpoint, so whether it's fire marshal, or what I mean, but then again, if that's the case, then, yeah, I guess that standard needs to be clear as far as what?
Well, and I think that's the reason that we did not specify what the building codes, fire codes, or other applicable laws are, because we don't wanna limit ourselves to, you got Liz?
Yeah, Liz is on the line, and she's ready to answer your questions.
Hey Liz, so, our first question is on section four dash six dash four, uh, no, four dash six dash five, inspection and self-certification?
Yes.
The third line, uh, approved checklist and verification of compliance with, you know, codes and laws. Can we change the word verification of compliance to something else, because they don't know if they're compliant or not? You know, something along the lines of, I understand I'm responsible for being compliant with, or something like that?
And-
Are you wanting that, or you still wanna come back to it?
If we, would, would it, Liz, if we, if we, instead of verification of compliance, can say something like-
Acknowledgement of applicable building codes, fire codes, and all other applicable laws.
And hang on, Charles has got an idea for it.
I'm gonna say to me, the language should say, um, instead of I verify on the compliance, it should say, uh, I know of no non-compliance. So, you're not verifying that you're, you're compliant, but you're stating to the best of your ability, you know of no violation of any-
You're not committing violation.
Right, right.
I think what Liz said makes sense too.
Say it again, Liz?
I said, self-certification will include completion of an approved checklist and acknowledgement of the applicable building codes, fire codes, and all other applicable laws.
If any, if any, and so, I, I, that's the question is, what are those?
Yeah, what are those?
Well, they're in our ordinances, I mean, you're, they're bound by those, whether they're a hithenology or not.
Obviously, we end up with a-
Okay, okay.
So, there are four of those, okay.
Okay, so, I'm gonna-
That's also kinda why I like using the word applicable, because if it's not applicable to them, it doesn't apply to them. So, they're just acknowledging applicable building codes, fire codes, and other applicable laws. And we say other applicable laws, because there may be some state or federal something that applies to them. This is, we just use the broad term applicable laws to say, you know, they're acknowledging those.
Hey.
I mean, I think we could do something like Charles was saying, as far as, you know, we don't know of any non-compliance, but that gets a little, and it gets a little bit wordy, I think if we just say, we acknowledge applicable laws, which whether they acknowledge it or not, they're still bound by, we don't, they don't even know what the law is, does it-
Well, those ordn- those ordinance, the, in the ordinance, Liz, it does, it states and repeats the same thing, which is compliance, and so, that's none of the same concern that a lot of the short terminals are having is, what is that compliance, because it's listed in the ordinances too.
Charles, would you restate your words again?
Um, rather than I verify on the compliance, I know of no non-compliance. Um, I, I know of no violation. They do this in, in real estate, when you're at-
So, it gives me something like attest to no known violations of existing building codes, fire codes.
Right, yeah, yes, okay. And, um, attest, which is the word that's on, attest to no-
No.
None.
No, no.
Building codes, fire codes, and all applicable laws.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna read it one more time, okay?
Self-certification will include completion of an approved checklist and attestation, or whatever word we use-
And to attest to?
Of no, of no known current violations of any applicable building codes, fire codes, and all other applicable laws.
None, current, building codes, fire codes, and all applicable laws.
Yeah, current violations.
Okay, I like that, everybody else like that?
Yeah, will you read that too?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and read the whole sen- two, whole sentence, it's not that long. Self-certification will include completion of an approved checklist and attestation to no known current building code, fire code, and all other applicable law violations. No, we don't even need violations, do we?
Yeah, so, we're gonna get additions needed to be up for it.
Yeah, okay, self-certification will complete, will include completion of an approved checklist and attestation to no known current violations of building codes, fire codes, and all other applicable laws.
Yes, I think that's right.
Violations of current, no, current violations, violations of current.
Yes, violation, no, known violation of current.
Current building codes, yeah, that's what's off to me.
Okay, one more, one more read-through. Self-certification will include completion of an approved checklist and attestation to no known violations of current building codes, fire codes, and all other applicable laws.
Yeah, do you think we should say attestation to no, or should we say attestation that there are no?
That there are no, yeah, attestation-
Yeah, I think that'd be-
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the-
Okay, read that part, attestation to?
That there are no.
That there are no.
Attestation that there are no.
Okay, one more read-through, okay? Self-certification will include completion of an approved checklist and attestation that there are no known violations of current building codes, fire codes, and all other applicable laws.
I like it.
Okay?
Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay, we'll write that up, B.
Just make sure you include that entire license in your motion, and then you have to change this.
Yep, that's what we'll do. I've gotta read some.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks for stand-by.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, bye, Liz.
Oh, okay, thanks, sir.
Okay, that was painful, but good. Okay, Chad, you wanna go to six, operator's responsibilities?
Six is, six is, um, I noticed that yesterday, and then I, I had a few phone calls on, on this section, and I feel like A needs to be potentially eliminated. So, we, uh, invasive in my opinion to ask an operator to post a license number on every single piece of marketing material that they are gonna be doing. I don't really know why we need to know that, and no one else is doing it. Um, so, I think that one's needs to be eliminated.
I could agree with that, if we keep it on B, that's kinda like when you go to the hotels and they got that four-point phone that you should read on the bathroom door, that's what this is.
Now, B, B is another one that might be a consideration for us to, hey, it might not be something we can do initially, but, um, one cabin owner brought up to, uh, maybe even have that displayed as, um, a Coch, a Coch, a town license, something nice that they could put on the cabin.
Absolutely, one of, and this, one of the reasons is, you know, it kinda went back to A, I can see how we would wanna take it out, but they don't wanna do that. Um, it goes back to, am I booking a legit STR? Or am I gonna get scammed when I get there to find out that that STR doesn't exist, because somebody's listed photos off the website or something? But ultimately, the renters and the managers, owners, do have to have some responsibility.
It's the same principle as with the health department.
Yeah.
We have to display our permit to operate, and that's, and they walk in the door, they have the ECA.
But that's just on their website. And again, what we can do, what I'm really hoping is that the town can help cabins rent, by, people know they can go to the town and find a cabin that's been licensed, and they'll be on their website.
Just a rare combination.
Right.
But that, but that's the same token, that's the same token. You feel like A needs to be totally eliminated, you think it's invasive.
Yeah.
What's the difference in A that says rental license number, go to B, so what's it say, rental license number? You're doing, you're, you're gonna display that number sooner or later.
B, you're displaying it on the property, and A, you're displaying it on-
Yeah, put on every-
Every single piece of marketing material that you send out there, you know, in the digital world, or what have you. B would be on the actual cabin.
You can have your-
I think, you know, the license number is public, everyone's gonna have access to it. And you have, uh, requirements to put your license number in advertisements, on, in all kinds of professions, you know, real estate brokers, uh, loan officers, it's, it's, uh, I would think if someone's looking at an advertisement, they wanna know what this cabin's licensed and all, you know? Um, I don't think it would be that much of a burden to stick license number or whatever on any ad, you're adding-
How many, what percentage of your-
Do you have a way to?
I think you don't wanna force them.
I agree, they just don't have license number on the same page.
Right, and you're looking at, you know, I mean, billboards is a different ordinance, but you got a billboard out there, you've got, you know, half a second to get your reader's attention, you don't wanna be using it with license number. I say we eliminate section.
Thank you.
I agree.
All right, yeah, we, we're gonna quit talking about that dead horse. Okay, all right, but I do like the, um, I, I like license B.
Yeah, B needs to stay.
Reception?
On the-
Okay. See, let's talk about emergency contact. Um, I got a lot of feedback about, well, you know, I'm not gonna be available at two AM, well, they tell you somebody's gotta be available at two AM when there's thirty people in the cabin with a fire, the owner's gonna wanna know about it. We're not gonna be calling them about something that's not an emergency. Um, I think we have to be able to have a twenty-four-hour phone number that will not be abused, but we've got to be able to get hold of people. Discussion on scene?
I agree, one hundred percent, we got, we got it.
Well, go ahead, my, uh-
Trustees?
And on mine, uh, I ask for emergency contact and a backup contact, it has to be someone that doesn't live in the household. So, if you go to Spain, don't have phone reception, at least I can call the sun.
Well, not one Spain, but I'd like to go to Spain.
You know, but, uh, just to have one with emergency contact person, good enough.
Yeah.
But for this part, should we just put that one is required, I mean, we get to, usually you get his and her phone number, or his and her phone number, or whatever, I mean, they've also got, you know, a lot of them do have management companies. Are we good with at least having one for the addmiss instead of two?
And I think, and I think we should move eventually towards, and I said, because sometimes in a case of emergency, it wouldn't hurt to have a second, because that first one's not- wouldn't hurt to have a second, because that first one's not.
Well, and I can also tell you from example, I mean, I'm just talking this past weekend, I'm not talking about for the twelve hundred phone calls this past year, um, that is very low number. You know, somebody shot a gun at a cabin, it accidentally hit another cabin, broke the window, and there were people in there. I think the owner would wanna know about that, but sometimes they're protected by their managers, or the security, or whatever, and they had no idea this stuff was going on. So I do like the idea of, we do want an owner contact, but it would only be for an emergency.
Who's gonna monitor all this? Who's gonna-
Well, that's part of the-
This, this rolodex.
Well, so there's two things, not me. Avenue has a twenty-four seven phone number, so when somebody has a loud party-
I'm gonna have this rolodex so they can, oh, okay.
Yes, that will be part of the license, is they can look up, but they will answer the phone twenty-four seven instead of me, or Jason, or the sheriff. And then they will call the appropriate party based on how bad the infraction is. So, I, I know that we didn't have two operators here. I was actually asking if you wanted to address the trustees on either number C, or are we-
I can understand the, I, I can understand the importance of it. Um, you know, you do talk about, you talk about the best owner, but all of these reference the operator. And, uh, so the operator is the one here, I guess, that represented the-
Right, yes.
Maybe just change that word.
Well, I think, I think in the definition, it does say that the operator is the best owner.
Yes.
My, my concern is opening a can of worms here, for example, about, okay, so, somebody gets a call at two in the morning, that a gun went off over there, and I'm gonna look it up and start calling the owner when the police haven't even come? There's, you know what I'm saying?
And then they got the wrong cabin.
And then they have the wrong cabin, wrong, it's almost like a gossip.
Yeah, it is, I agree.
And then, and then we're gonna have this twenty-four seven, that, like, well, I think here, music is too loud, 'cause I don't like that music.
Avenue should be calling the cabin, Avenue should be calling the town.
And we see that on, on social media, who lives here? Excuse me, go over there and knock on the door. I, I don't, I don't know that anyone, like the idea.
My question is, who's gonna be making the phone call on the four hour?
We have to, we could say, I don't think-
Avenue will make the phone call, it, it will be a work in progress, but-
We have done well without it, I feel.
You're not taking my phone calls.
Well, then don't answer, I mean, there are a lot of other voicemails, or get off social media, I mean-
I'm not willing to let, um, somebody shooting a gun in a cabin go on the phone.
Okay, that's one, and two years.
I think that, I think that, uh, I think that the phone call should go to Avenue, but Avenue then should be to call the town, which, or the sheriff, I mean, again, it's a, it's a-
And your sheriff, yeah, sheriff.
I think we need to have a twenty-four hour phone number, because it not be abused, I mean, I mean-
The, within, within an hour, you know, is, but I do understand if it's, if it's on fire, it's a little different than a noise control. But, in my case, it's me or one other lady who has the phone, so, we answer it twenty-four hours a day, unless we're shut.
I guess, go ahead.
You're gonna get a lot of self-managers that don't live here, calling that number, asking you to go check on things. It's already happening.
And that-
Because they don't live here, and they don't want an operator, and they don't know their neighbors, but they want you to take care, and I don't believe that's the, this is the one.
Who, who are they asking to go take care of this?
It depends on what the issue is, and that goes under violations. And those are the things that, you know, when the town takes three phone calls of a violation, then that's when they can lose their license or receive penalties for that, for the charges of the callouts.
Well, I guess here's my thought on, on the whole thing, is, if something happens, somebody shoots a gun, they're calling me anyway. If they think my cabin's involved, they're calling me in the middle of the night, and I'm on the, whoever's making the emergency call, or whoever's reporting this, whether it's Avenue or a guest, they're calling somebody first, that's generally the management company, okay? Again, it, it rarely happens, but it does, so I don't see the diff, the only thing I'm worried about this is non-answering complies non-compliance. So what is the penalty for non-compliance? Because when those midnight calls come in, sometimes I wake up and answer them, sometimes I don't. So I guess my thing is, that's gonna happen on occasion, but what happens when the management company doesn't answer the phone? And two hours go by, they get up, oh, missed the call, call, what is the penalty for that? And that's-
I think that the first penalties are, I mean, penalties can be waived too. There's a lot, I don't answer my phone if I'm asleep and they'll hear it, you might have to call me twice, you know? So I think that it says that it, that there are remedies for these violations, but it hasn't stated what those are. I mean, we're brand new, we've got to figure these things out, but I think the first step is, I gotta have a phone number to call somebody if your cabin's on fire.
Okay. May I ask?
Yes, thank you.
How about making sure that every cabin has those important numbers in it? I know that I'm sitting here with two big cabin operators, as neighbors, and friends, and competition at the same time. We have on every refrigerator, and we've seen it, it's laminated, and it says, call this for this, call this for this, and also the directions, because I can call from, and say my house is on fire, our department doesn't know that.
We've already had that discussion, we do want to do that, yes.
So to me, that's more important to require for an S T R than a phone number.
Let's go back.
Because they will call you and say, my water's hot, not hot enough, and you don't get those calls.
Here's, here's my deal with this, is, this number, whoever fills out their permit for the town, they're turning in their application for an S T R permit, they're gonna turn in, either they're a self-managed owner, and you've got their phone number, or they're gonna turn in who's managing the, the properties, that's the twenty, whatever number is there, that's the twenty-four hour number that if there is a fire or an emergency, that you would call, I, I'm, I feel like this whole thing here is just an unnecessary clause, like, we've got the phone number on the application, and that's the number you would call. I mean, if you give them, you understand what I'm saying.
But the application does not require that they answer, it just says, what's the phone number?
Well, I know, that's what, and that's, that's the other thing is, okay, if we're required to be answered, but we have no, what is the penalty? And I know we gotta work all this out, and, but it's, there's no penalty there right now. I just, I don't know.
You need to judge that, whether it was a, a, um-
If you go with-
Lack of, lack, lack of care, like, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm partying too loud, or, you know, I'm not gonna answer the phone 'cause I'm passed out, and I don't care about my guests? Or is it, the phone system is down, or I didn't hear 'cause I was sleeping solid? I mean, who's gonna judge that?
Charles, um, I was looking for one of our mission registration forms, and our monthly, when they report to us, is there, is there required on our contact number? I thought I had one here, I know it is on the registration form.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is a line for it.
There's a line for it, I mean, we don't have an abstract that says required, but, um, but there is- That, that would be that phone number that you would call if on that registration, they'd do with that?
Yeah, I mean, if there's a good thing they've worked that is taking place for the cabin operator, then, then as, as a city, you can, you know, you can wait, you're gonna have those situations.
Absolutely. I still think we need to have, that it's required.
Require a contact now.
An emergency contact.
Emergency contact.
Which is what C says, you don't wanna edit it anymore, I mean, that's what it says, we gotta have it.
Right, but then it states though, the issue of non-compliance is described in section four, six, seven.
Right.
Well, at this time, I guess the non-compliance is a little bit the license you have there, so.
Let's just say, when we take the same phone call fifteen times from the same cabin for non-compliance, that's when the, you know, the remedies need to be enforced.
I just wondered if, um, you know, if so we have, I, 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 I believe we do need this emergency contact person, but to say you've got to respond to a violation of this ordinance within twenty-four hours, I think is probably not legit, because we don't know if they violate the ordinance. We're gonna say you violate the ordinance, but they have, you know, an opportunity to say, no, I'm not, you know? So I, I don't think just an accusation that you're violating an ordinance is going to necessitate a twenty-four hour, uh, response.
It's that within one hour, within one hour.
Within, okay, so that's-
One hour.
Typically, whenever you layer law enforcement, whenever law enforcement gets involved, so if it is an emergency, if there is a noise abatement that needs to happen, there's gonna be a report that's filed on that, so that that would be your documenting measure, is, would be whenever we do have law enforcement that's capable of responding to emergencies, right? Now, if it's other smaller stuff, then obviously it's not to be-
I mean, what is an emergency, a violation of an ordinance, you know, if your weeds are up front, that's not an emergency, you know?
Yeah.
And that's why it says emergency contact, I mean, I think we're talking about health, safety, and-
If someone's firing guns on the property, what's the operator, I mean, that, the, the police are gonna have to respond to that.
Right.
We don't want a bunch of, you know, anti's out there trying to, you know, uh, uh-
Right, to the situation.
Right, so I'm, I'm-
Guns everywhere.
So basically, at this point, this, this, C, I mean, it's simply B, you're required to have emergency contact number.
And maybe-
Whatever file, whatever, file, it's a-
Yeah, and that's it.
And then when we get systems in place, the, the, fire, the police, part of everything else, I think we, you know, maybe can expand.
And you know, you might even put the emergency contact person shall communicate with operator and or sheriff, you know, you know, if it's an emergency, because like you said, you don't really know what the, you know, what the emergency is, if it's something live right now.
Well, I would say, uh, the owner, the owner or operator has to rectify the situation, well, you know, what does that mean?
Yes.
You know, how, are they gonna take it in their own, to go out and remove people?
Yeah.
Four, six, seven says, three or more instances of non-compliance by the operator of short-term rentals that anyone should pause at the time of child inclusion, nothing, basically saying, once they do something three times, we can revoke their, I don't think that should be, uh, it could be, I don't think that should be counted as one of those violations, if you get somebody to rock them.
Yes. What if we just move, um, we'll go back on C. Four dash six dash seven that says a short-term rental license may be subject to revocation, instead of shall be subject to revocation.
That would help, that would let us know there's some gray areas and- Well, it gives you, it gives you a, um, um, opportunity to evaluate it.
Again, it's all new, give us a chance to figure out what these are, but we gotta have, the bottom is, we gotta have a twenty-four hour phone number.
I agree, I agree, that number needs to be there, I think it's just-
So there's a twenty-four hour phone number for me to call for broken bowl, say?
This isn't broken bowl, this is what you can-
I know, but I would-
It's about S T Rs.
Avenue would be-
Avenue will take the initial twenty-four seven phone number and decide, do the police need to be called?
Cause I think that's-
Do we have the cabin on fire, do you wanna keep calling it? You might wanna go ahead and call that unmarked.
I think the difference between broken bowl and Ho Chi-Town is the fact that we're dealing with, you know, S T Rs.
Put on a these people bar.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know, I just feel like you're still opening yourself up for can of worms. You're gonna have people calling you, well, for your, out of all the calls that you fielded, how many were emergencies?
How, and is Avenue charged by the call?
No, this is part of the package, so they are responsible, they're doing this, they're responsible for doing this.
I just, I don't, I get calls all the time, 'cause I'm the manager company, I'm listed on the refrigerator, I mean, I, I say we, you know, you have to put emergency contact, my counter said it's on there.
But it goes in our files, not to, on the refrigerator. Refrigerator number for twenty-four seven is Avenue's phone number.
Yes, for the guest, for the guest.
If you have a problem, call this number twenty-four seven, you have nine-one-one, police, fire, uh, gang warden,
quartermaster.
Quartermaster, you know, I mean, all of our emergency contacts that, you know, twenty-four seven is to Avenue.
So, so in other words, say hot water heater just went out, and they call, and we haven't gotten back to them, they're gonna call. If that phone number's there, they're gonna go down, and they're, then they're gonna report to us that we haven't, like, wait a second, we just had five of their calls.
I don't think that's, I don't think you're gonna be deemed as an emergency call, because your hot water heater went out.
And I think what, what we can do is vet-
If that phone number's there, they're gonna call every single-
Well, what we can do to vet that situation is, is to contact Avenue, and to make sure Avenue understands-
And that's what we'll be doing.
Where, you know, what calls are, you know, important, and what calls should be, should be, uh, we've done. I don't think it's any different than the way it is right now, I mean, it's no different, there's a management number or operator number they're given, and then there's a list of emergency numbers they're given, and if they have an issue like a water heater, they're calling the management company. And that's the same, that should be the same number that's on the forms for emergency call, they should be wanting the same. Whatever number is in that cabin on the refrigerator, or emerg, or, not necessarily emergency, but maintenance issue, water heater, that type of thing, should be, should be the same number that's given for an emergency on the town permit.
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, if I was owner, that's who I would put on there, it's my management company.
Right, I mean, that's what I do.
Yeah, so, I mean-
It's a company case, hot water heater.
I just, I don't, I think the only difference between how it actually works now and this would be, if we didn't answer, we're subject to these, this, the, the punishment down there. And that's, I just think that we wanna take that out, because you, say you mess around and you get two of these, just through being in lack of that, whatever reason, and then you get discouraged, because you didn't wake up and answer the phone, and then all of a sudden your S T R is changed. I think we just, to me, this is no different than how it's already set up, I mean, other than the town will have that number.
This, this emergency number is for the town, not for the tenants' use or the energy.
But, and, but that's what I'm saying, if they're-
Refrigerator, that's who that number calls.
They'll get, they, most of them have that number in them.
This one, this is for, this contact is for us, not for, not for the user.
Right.
Everybody's the same.
No, it's not the same, this is for the towns use.
Yeah, this, this number, not now, is for the, for the town to call.
If we get the call, if we get, it's like Diane, if we keep getting all these calls, we're not, we're not gonna call nine-one-one or sheriff, we might, but we're gonna call these people first to let them know, we just got three calls on your cabin.
Then it's on fire.
This is not for the renters to use, or whatever numbers you post out there for emergency numbers on your refrigerator door. This number won't be there.
Okay, I thought you were saying, we-
No, it's not.
This is for us, when your cabin's on fire, when you look at that S T R and say, who's the owner?
I kept reading all this, and there's a misconception here, there's miscommunication. This emergency number is for the town, Ho Chi-Town's use only, okay? When, when, when we get called, we're gonna decide whether it's Avenue, whether it's Diane, whether it's somebody's gonna decide, we're fixing to call this number 'cause that cabin got a problem. We wanna know the owner or responsible person, whether that's you as an operator, or whatever. This number is not for the use of a renter or tenant.
Yes, thank you.
And that number will not be posted in the cabin.
Thank you.
Okay.
You all good with that now?
We good with that now?
All right, everybody okay with C? Okay, are we ready to go to four dash six dash seven? Thank you, Howard.
After that, we'll come back.
So, yeah, the operator shall ensure the short-term rental is in compliance with applicable building codes, fire codes, and all other applicable laws. That kinda refers back to the, what we were talking about a while ago, it's kind of a duplicate, why can't we just take that out?
I agree, hang on, let me, let me find it.
It's a duplicate of-
I think the difference is, this is ongoing responsibility.
Inspection and self-certification, yeah, so.
Just needs to be worded as the-
Or just taken out, it's, I'll say it twice.
Well, the difference is, it's in a different section, the inspection and self-certification is kinda like this one-time, you know, annual process, but the operator's daily operation is, is section four dash six dash six. Okay, then just, um, say it the same way. I think we better leave it in, but say it the same way.
The way I read this in the section at the end is, if the town comes out and finds you're non-compliant with certain things, you're ensuring that you will correct those issues. It, it's not necessarily saying that you've gotta step by step go through every day and make sure you're meeting these codes, but at one, at some point, when the town does have an inspector, they inspect your unit, and they say you are non-compliant here, this is not the code, you're ensuring that you will correct those issues.
I'm like, yeah, gotcha, except for the extra period, but why?
But it's still, I mean, initially, when you, when you sign your application, and you're testing to these ongoing responsibilities, you don't have that information.
No, no, but this, this is in a different section, this is in the operator's responsibility, this isn't in the self-certification part, this is in the operator's responsibility.
As a cabin manager, you can ensure that your cabins are all compliant, it's the same thing. As a cabin manager, you can ensure that your cabins are all in compliance, it's the same thing as the other section.
Well, then we've changed that wording to.
The first one is saying, I know of no violations, right? And I, I would say this one perhaps, if you are made aware of a violation, you're gonna.
Because this is under section four dash six dash six, which is a separate section.
There may be a different way to work that, but it is the operator's responsibility to ensure that those units meet those codes, so. I mean, that's, that's how I've interpreted that, but I see what you're saying, it could be that.
But then I couldn't say that, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, so you're gonna test that in, you're testing, I don't know, but if someone happens to come out and says, Jen, you're definitely a violation.
Yes, I'm gonna, once made aware of any violations, assure.
Sure, any short-term.
Brought to the attention of.
If the operator is notified that any non-compliance, they will be remade and corrected.
I don't think it should say notify, I think it should say just the way it is.
Yeah.
Because you may eventually find out after your self-certification that you're non-compliant with something, but you're like, well, they hadn't found it, so I'm not gonna do anything. I think it's the owner's responsibility to ensure that they are compliant. Again, and that probably ain't known unless somebody pointed out to them.
It's just still, it's a operator in a situation of.
Well, ensure.
Also legal responsibility.
It, it, to me, the word ensure doesn't mean I'm saying it is right now.
Right.
I'm just saying that if there's ever a, a need, I would correct whatever issues made coming up, to me, that's what the word ensure means that. It doesn't, I'm not saying that I'm in compliance right now at this very moment, or I don't know if I'm in compliance, but if I know me.
If you sign this right now, and one of your cabins burned down today, or something happens, and you're, you don't think somebody's gonna come back and cut?
No, that, you know, that, there would have to be some gross negligence if you didn't have the men's right, you know, that the, um, intent, you know, to deceive someone, to, to stand up.
I think that correcting that initial one, with initial correction, correct, correct the problem, and this just, that's the status that we will continue to keep on him in march.
Just keep in mind, ensure that's, that's, that's a certainty definition, so it's not a hope for the best.
And so is the word shall, but I, I think we need to leave it in there, then, okay. Are we ready to move to section seven? Yep. Four dash six dash seven, registration, a short-term rental license may be subject to revocation, are we good with that? And I think we need to call Liz before we change it, from shall to may.
Do you want to take the recall right now?
People that can be appointed, you know.
That will, that will. It has a version, the definition of insurance to make certain, to make certain. So if I'm sure of something, it is, that means I'm saying it is, if I'm sure of something, it is, means I guarantee it, if it's not, it's not making. I'm just looking at, because that's what the lawyer is gonna say, I'm looking at the definition. Insurance, make sure certain.
We got Liz on the phone?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, section four dash six dash seven for revocation? First sentence, are you there?
Yep.
Okay, a short-term rental license may be subject to revocation versus shall be subject to revocation, after three instances. Can we just use the word may instead of shall?
Yes, but I'm gonna tell you, you have to enforce it the same as against everyone. So we gotta be careful about using discretion, if you're gonna revoke it for somebody for not doing it for three months, you better treat everybody the same.
So it's not, it's not forever?
If you have shall, then you have no discretion, and you can, the statute is what it is, if you say may, then when are you gonna not enforce it?
Right, you can't discriminate against that one.
It puts you guys in a weird situation, because who's gonna make the decision about whether you're gonna enforce it, and what factors are you gonna consider? And you don't want to ask some sort of discrimination play, you didn't enforce it against me, then because X, Y, Z, but you want to enforce it against me? Like, how are you gonna delineate who you're gonna enforce against and who you're not?
Makes sense. Yeah, another thing too, Liz, if, if we make this sort of optional, like may, then we are almost gonna have to add some language, if we waive it now, that'd mean we're gonna waive it in the future, right? Because otherwise, there might be some kind of course of conduct established.
Yeah, somebody will say, this, you're a waiver of it in the past, you want to do a waiver of it for all time, so I think you guys should, guys just need to decide, if people don't comply, what are we gonna do, I mean, it has to, it has to somehow, it's either for me that they're reporting.
So what if we leave it to shall, but it doesn't mean they can't come back later and reapply? We don't have to put that in there, but, you know, that's an option, someone could reapply for another SDR license once theirs has been revoked, I like your driver's license, I see that all the time in the newspaper. Driver's license revoked, well, you can go get it back.
I think we better leave it to shall.
I think it is too.
The other thing you guys need to think about here, of course, this is an out of experience thing. We give these people notice of non-compliance by personal service, there's nothing that says we can't go out to them the first time and be like, hey, we're not gonna issue a notice of non-compliance, we're gonna give you a chance to fix this.
I like that.
If we have, that's the thing about government, and you see it all the time with, all the time with DAs, just because somebody did something bad, doesn't mean they're gonna get in trouble for it, because it might not get enforced, or it may be enforced in a manner that tries to encourage compliance before you're in trouble. And so we think that there's gonna be a lot of discussion on the actual enforcement end of this, is, are we just gonna get out there and start writing tickets for everything issuing non-compliance? Or probably not, we're gonna work with people to try to help them get compliance before we ever get to this point. So my preference, not because I want to penalize people, but to protect you all, to not put you in a situation where you're having to make a decision between two different people in different circumstances, when you have the word may in there. So I, I would suggest we leave it shall, of what we're talking about how we actually enforce this, before we start issuing non-compliance tickets. We're gonna be working with people to get them to compliance first, because that's the role of all of us.
Which was what we've always said, we're gonna ask you to turn the music down, that usually gets the music turned down.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with shall, you all good with shall?
So how, how, so how does that work when, you know, if you have an operator that ends up, um, in a situation where they're non-compliant? You know, and they've got this, you know, cabin that is, um, let's just say they've had a bad operator, and he's a couple of what have you, so once this is taken place, then what's the future of that cabin and that operator?
Well, in this same section for revocation, they have been right to appeal that decision within ten days, um, so they'll have that due process right. But it's just like, it's just like, uh, you, Charlie, that's shall talking, if you're selling stuff from the shop at the front of the restaurant, and you don't pay sales tax, they're gonna come, put it eventually at some point, they're gonna come put a deal on your window and lock your door, so you can't operate, it's the same thing here.
Well, until you pay it.
Tax.
Until you pay it, so with this situation, I don't want there to be a, I'm just looking at the long game of this cabin and saying, okay, you know, you know, how do we, uh, how do we get this cabin back and operating if they're able to pay a particular penalty or, you know, there needs to be something where they're not just, you know, banned for a life.
And that was my comment, was, you know, just because you had your driver's license revoked, you can't go get another driver's license, you could go get another license, this is my thought.
Yeah, there's nothing in here that says, once you're revoked, you can't comply.
Yeah, I think sure if you're going for a lot. Okay, that's what I was thinking, yeah, sure.
It'll come down to folks on the ground, like Adam and the team that he's given create to work with these people, because nobody wants to have a crappy cabinet, so it's getting in trouble, people don't want one. So our goal is gonna be to work with people before we ever get to having to implement or, uh, enforce four dash six dash seven at all.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, shall it, shall be?
I think so, I think that, I just think that's better for everybody, because the expectation is now, there's not one-off exceptions being made that can create some sort of discriminatory play, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
So, anything else? Do you want to go back for a final review?
Okay.
Should we, should we say, I make the motion to make the final revisions, then you can, then go forward. Okay.
Yeah, but still, back.
Go what? Well, I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go back to section four dash six dash four, starting with number eight. Okay, I make the motion, make the final revisions, go forward. And so, okay, are you ready, Todd, are you keeping them up?
Yeah.
I think I've got it pretty good, so we can compare, okay. We have a motion on the table to amend ordinance number six, section four dash six dash four fees. Initial registration fee, at the time of an initial license application for a short-term rental license, an operator shall also pay the town an initial registration fee of three hundred dollars. The registration fee is intended to provide funding to defray costs associated with monitoring or compliance with current ordinances governing short-term rental license, short-term rental use, and new nuisances. Item number B, annual renewal application and fee, an annual renewal application and fee of two hundred and twenty-five dollars to be changed to one hundred dollars. Okay, I'm gonna read that one again, annual renewal application and fee, an annual renewal application and fee of one hundred dollars shall be due on or before July first, twenty twenty-four, and each following year on or before July first. Item number C, a late fee in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars per month shall be incurred if a property is not registered or if an annual license fee is not submitted by the July first deadline.
What number was that?
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Per month?
Per month, right. In section four dash six dash five, inspection and self-certification, the operator may request to self-certify when submitting an application and must be current on lodging taxes to qualify. Self-certification will include completion of an approved checklist, and attestation that know that there are no known violations of current building codes, fire codes, and all other applicable laws. Correct.
Where's the checklist? Are we gonna furnish that checklist?
Yeah, yes.
We have to furnish that checklist, and we make, and we can poke this in without seeing that checklist. So we need to be able to hand our operators a checklist, do we have one yet?
I don't know if that has.
Well, it says, it says, read it again, Diane.
Hang on, let's, let's.
Of an approved checklist.
On an approved checklist, yes. Adam, you have a comment?
I don't, I haven't seen one.
Should, well, should we take out approved checklist, because the application is what it is? The application may have the checklist attached to it, but.
I think this is something that, I mean.
Something that Avenue is going to with the registration and online or where. Plus, I think, we could probably agree if we need to, add a different meaning to the checklist, we could approve the checklist, but we have to, I'd say we get this done. And then, you know, we have to, as trustees, you guys need to approve that checklist, and we do.
Let's see what's, the system's regarding, so we need self-certification, and attestation, right? Okay, this, they're talking about a checklist that's provided, so we've got a couple questions. Who has? Have a girl.
Uh, hi Liz, we're, we're back. Uh, section four dash six dash five, inspection and self-certification. It talks about self-certification will include completion of an approved checklist. And this is the operator filling out an approved checklist. My question is, where is the checklist, who has it, who's gonna produce it, and how do we get it to the operator for them to fill it out?
So, when they go to register with Avenue to get their registration, part of the information they have to fill in will be this self-certification. It'll be all online, it's not so formal, they have to.
That was my question, where is it?
Yeah, the content of the checklist, we don't want to put it in the SDR ordinance, because it's gonna be approved by the trustees and can change from time to time.
Okay.
So we, we may determine, hey, we want to have a checklist about how many, um, smoke detectors you have, or we want to have a checklist about, is their pool at your property? Those sorts of things, um, are, is, do you have insurance? So we want to have the flexibility to adjust that checklist as we determine the appropriate things we need to be checking with the SDR. And so, uh, that's why we just have approved checklist, so it'll be, the trustee, you guys will have input and, and see what Avenue, based on kind of their experience with other similar SDRs, uh, suggested we include in the checklist.
Do, do we have an estimated timeframe, if we approve this and approve this today? When do, when do we expect Avenue to be able to show us that checklist, be, when can we go look at it?
I think the checklist that we have now is, how, is, what's the address of the property, and what's the address of the property owner? How many bedrooms, I mean, it's pretty short, it's only.
It's pretty short, I know, when Mayor and I spoke last week before the meeting, that Avenue was saying they'd be up as early as last Friday, and both he and I said, before they're up, we want training, and especially for Adam to be able to go in and look at it, and confirm that, that, uh, you know, we've got all that in there, and it's nothing that we don't want in there.
I think what I looked at again, the checklist was like three things, the address of your property, the name of the property.
It's very small, because we.
Yeah.
Want to get people registered, I ask people, and over time, we want to leave the flexibility to include, you know, certain safety things in there that we determine might be necessary. I've not been involved in that part as much, but I think that was how we're speaking, you might want to, well, Mayor, tell him about that, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty, but we want to leave that as flexible as possible, so we can adjust as soon.
I, I agree, but the way it states is, and you're saying that this, if we, if somebody's gone out there and seen this application, yeah, approved, uh, self-certified to complete an approved checklist and verification, so the checklist, you have an application that's asking for a name, and address, and phone number of the owner, you know? The operator has to, some, sooner or later, owner or operator has to have another checklist to verify the building code, because it's got in there codes, and fire codes, and other applicable laws. If the only thing you've asked them is for their name, cell phone number, and address, there's nothing in there that states, where is this checklist? If I got checked off, send it in, yes, I'll self-verify.
And I've not personally seen the checklist, something that Mayor's been working directly with Avenue, so I hate to tell you, this is what's on it, and I know for sure.
Okay, we got it, we got it.
If you have specific concerns about that, that you should.
So can we change that right now?
Ask Mayor, or if you'd like, I can email Mayor and say, can you please send us the list of what's gonna be included on the certification? And I can talk to each of you and get any feedback that we need if we're concerned with the current version of it, would that be helpful?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think what, I think once Mayor's updated, that we've changed some of the language on that four, six, five, and what, Howard's saying, but he'll be able to clarify that, and because that just, does eliminate the word verification, which eliminates some of what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think there's certain things on there, and again, it's been, I, I'm not seeing the list, but I know at one point, I remember this discussion about, you know, how specific do we get, or do we mostly say, they acknowledge that there's these applicable laws, and that they're doing what they're supposed to? So I'll check back in with them and see where they landed on that, and I can circulate an information about that issue.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
One sec, you bet.
Okay, you want me to read four dash six dash five one more time?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Try that again. That's it, thank you, Liz.
I think, thank you.
The operator may request to self-certify when submitting an application and must be current on lodging taxes to qualify. Self-certification will include completion of an. Self-certification will include completion of an approved checklist and attestation that know that there are no known violations of current building codes, fire codes, and all other applicable laws. One more time, Todd?
Got it.
Okay. Section four dash six dash six. Number eight is omitted. Number C?
You're changing A.
Oh, okay. Number B will be changed to A. Number C will be changed to B. D will be C, E will be D, F will be E, G will be F. In section four dash six dash six, operator's responsibility, everyone hear the pedal? Um, on, go back to E. Just omit the Stridner's error of the double periods at the end. Those are all the amendments to ordinance number six.
There wasn't any amendments between B and E.
Shall, we can do that.
Okay, I make the motion, we approve ordinance number six with the changes that were just announced.
And we have a motion by Janet to accept ordinance, to take a vote on ordinance number six with the approved, with the amendments as presented.
Correct.
Say that again.
I miss this.
Another Stridner's error. I saw that. What do Stridner's errors have to be? Todd, you read the roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Janet Criss? Howard Hager?
Yes. Sorry, I was.
Diane?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Chad Sargent, yes. Motion carries.
That was a good sign.
Oh, no.
Okay.
My store is busy, so I'm kinda a lot stressed.
Okay, that was painful but necessary because all these other great counts have done this years ago. All right, uh, item number five, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve resolution number eleven, resolution of the governing body of the town of Ho Chi Minh, current county, state of Oklahoma, establishing a town credit card use policy, which I have presented to you this morning. It was a big stat on SDRs. All right, county Ho Chi Minh resolution number twenty-four dash oh one. We have to read the whole thing, can you read it?
Skip.
Do we have to read the entire resolution? You got it?
The bottom of it? I don't know.
I guess the resolution here is just the part of O, right? I mean, you don't have to read the actual policy.
Yeah, read the title.
Yeah, there we go, we'll read the title, okay. County Ho Chi Minh resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero one, everybody got a copy? I just gave, got the announcement.
But that's okay, go for it.
A resolution of the mayor and the board of trustees of the county of Ho Chi Minh, current county, state of Oklahoma, establishing a town credit card usage policy. Be resolved by the mayor and the board of trustees of the county of Ho Chi Minh, current county, state of Oklahoma. They see first and second page. And then the third page.
Would you like for me to?
You wanna summarize that?
Yeah, sure. So, board, uh, basically the need for the town credit card is, uh, as we continue to grow, as there's departments that need to be created, um, we bring it to, uh, an issue which, uh, I, uh, have to purchase, uh, many of the equipment and items and things necessary for the town on my own credit, line of credit. And, um, this is a very typical and common approach towards a town credit card. This has parameters for which employees you are allowed to have a town credit card. Um, it has a maximum expenditure per month, uh, for me in this case of ten thousand dollars. I cannot exceed ten thousand dollars as, as it is currently written in expenditures. Uh, I can only spend up to five thousand dollars for one transaction, that is my limit. Feel free to change those as you feel needed, those are just numbers between Liz and I, and just personal experience, I feel like that's a pretty good safeguard. This is not over the ten thousand dollar marker and to not exceed over five thousand dollars at one time in one transaction. Um, there are a lot of, uh, rules and regulations that, that come with, come with us, such as personal purchases, things of that nature that I'm unauthorized to use. Um, any sort of unauthorized use, uh, can result in suspension of the town card, uh, or termination of the employee.
Ash.
Yeah, 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 this, uh, this comes with parameters of how I'm to report to our treasurer as in filing receipts, signing off on receipts, showing purchase orders or invoices that are involved with purchases. Um, I do have a question, though, uh, if you guys wouldn't mind reconsidering. Uh, we have item number two under responsibilities of the cardholder. It says the employee is responsible to have an open purchase order. A lot of times, we won't have POs on things that we need to buy, like, for example, for our evidence room. Uh, I am, I am in need of a, of a safe, and at times, we just need to go by the store and take care of whatever we need to, uh, and that's gonna be about a two thousand dollar purchase. Um, so a lot of times, we won't operate with POs. If you want me to have a PO for every purchase, treasurer, we can find a way, but it will only create barriers for us to overcome in the future as we're trying to quickly, uh, resolve things and get the implement that we need to continue our operations. Um, and then the other, uh, question I have on that same line is just after purchase order, it says before requesting. Um, at times, I need to make fair judgment, I need you trusted with fair judgment of using this, uh, town credit card to make these purchases. If you feel the need that I need to request the use of the town credit card beforehand, that's fine. Um, I would request that you remove that and so that I have the jurisdiction and capabilities to go out and purchase what I need when I, as I make that need.
What do you think, Mr. Charles?
I think, I think the administrator definitely needs the, the ability to go out and purchase something that he absolutely needs. All of this is, is, uh, you know, uh, the credit card statements will be available, uh, to the treasurer.
Statements, the receipts.
Right, right. Statements, receipts.
Yep.
And, you know, if, if, uh, three months from now, we find, you know, Adam is just using his privileges, we revoke it, you know? So, he, there are checks and balances in place, he's, he's, uh, right, so I don't think it would be.
And again, part, so the other side of that is, again, because we haven't even had an annual budget yet, because we haven't got the revenue in to see what that even looks like. We don't have a PO system in order right now.
Exactly, and I wanted to comment on that, because that was something that Doug and I experienced from the last class at OML that we went through. Frank Croft, and it was part of the municipal budget act, states that, you know, be my latest wrong, but you establish a purchase order system or show the state you've got another system that works just as well. And, and I'm assuming that's, I was gonna talk to you about that before, when, when do we, or do we establish a purchase order system? Another check and balance, it takes that much longer to go buy something.
Correct.
And, and it just delays the process. Uh, I hope, from what I've seen and read so far, I hope we never get to that point where we prove to the state that we, we have another system and we're gonna get Frank Helsch that on the resume.
I like using a, a purchase, a purchase order system for the larger purchases, but anything that's quick that we need now, I think that that's, that's not a necessity.
This was what we had before, yeah.
You know, may, maybe, maybe if that, we're limited to ten thousand a month, maybe if we go buy a fifty thousand dollar item, we need.
Well, I'd have to go out for dead on that.
But your small, you know, your small purchases will be, will be.
It was down on us right now.
Yeah, it will be on my statement, I'll have to provide receipts for each of the, each individual item to our treasurer. Um, we'll work very closely to make sure. Yep.
You got the check, this note is on there? Okay.
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah.
Item number two, we're going to strike the first sentence, and we're just going to keep that appropriate accounting code shall be listed for expenses.
I make the motion that we change item number what?
Two.
Well, it doesn't say if the section number, but.
Oh, two.
It's responsibility.
I think what we need to do is, I mean, if everybody's had a chance to read this, we'll, um, accept a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh one as amended.
As amended.
By striking the first sentence of number two under the responsibilities of the cardholder.
There's one other.
No.
Oh, okay, sorry, I got my glasses on.
This is all mail charge with town credit card, it wants all names of all individuals in attendance.
Yes, that's required.
We gotta have that, that's a free paper, banquet. We gotta put everybody.
A bay would probably go on the credit card, you know, but yes, you have to list everybody.
Yeah.
Takes the IRS, everybody has to be listed on the receipt.
Okay, I make the motion, we approve the amended, uh,
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh one.
That's it. Thank you, second?
Make the motion by Janet.
I'll say it again.
Thank you.
I'm gonna read it one more time. We have a motion by Janet to approve the town of Ho Chi Minh resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh one as amended by striking the first sentence of number two under responsibilities of the cardholder.
Correct.
Okay, we have a second by Chad. Do we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Secretary?
Janet Criss?
Yes.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
You go, secretary.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Thank you, board.
The resolution carries.
I don't have to charge everything to my personal authority.
There you go.
Okay, item number, uh, agenda item number seven.
Hey, can, can, uh, can we be taxed exempt? Is that a thing that the city can do?
Yeah, if we have a, if we have a taxes supplier, I can utilize that whenever we do our purchasing.
Item number seven, new business, any matter not known or which could not have, whoop, you went, no.
Paychecks, number six. Paycheck.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Wrong one, hang on, let me, let me hold the gun in here. Okay, item number six, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve engagement with Paychex Inc. to provide payroll processing services for the town employees. Uh, we've worked with Crawford on this, Chad and Howard, just want to speak to this for just a minute.
Crawford was okay with us, you know, outsourcing that. I've used paychecks in the past, um, and they don't have a long-term contract at all, so we don't have to sign a one-year contract. They sent us a fee schedule and I, you know, we need to sign that, and if, if it's okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and sign it on behalf of the board. Uh, and it's just agreeing to pay the fees that they have per use. So we're only paying those fees, uh, for each payroll period. And it's, it's, uh, per, no, it's, it's per payroll.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we have more, uh, employees, then the fee is the same. Uh, and it's sixty-two dollars per paycheck. About that, so, you know, it's broken down with taxes.
Per employee.
No, regardless of what they have.
If I were in their fee schedule, we need to look at that.
One to five employees.
Yeah.
It's up to ten. It's up to ten. Paychecks is the first ten employees are under the same fee and then they charge you after the same.
I'm good with engaging paychecks because none of us are HR professionals today.
And they, so they, they will take your, pay the taxes.
Social security.
Right, promoting state taxes, federal taxes.
Board, on this motion that you do, uh, approve, make sure that you grant the treasurer the authority to sign on the, to sign the contract on behalf of the town. That's, make sure that's included in the motion. It just needs to be added to the motion.
Yeah, it's just that maybe a bit.
Okay, uh, item number six. Do we have a motion to approve the engagement of Paychex to provide payroll processing services for the town employees and to authorize the town treasurer to execute the contract?
Yes, sir.
Execute the agreement, but this is not a contract, this is an agreement. Yeah. Words in words, don't make any difference.
Okay, my second.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Howard.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Janet, let me read it one more time. Uh, action to approve the engagement with Paychex Inc. to provide payroll processing services for town employees and to authorize the town treasurer to execute the agreement. Correct?
Good, Todd?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, roll call vote from Mr. Secretary today?
Janet?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes as amended. Item number seven. New business, any matter not known which could not have recently been foreseen prior to the time of close to the agenda. Anything new? Hearing none?
Big motion we adjourn.
Discussion, consideration, possible action to adjourn, motion made by Janet. Do we have a second?
Second.
At, at Howard, roll call vote, Mr. Secretary?
Janet?
Big yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Myself, Chad?
Yes. Adjourned at ten twenty-eight AM, thank you all for the special money, some of the.